Who will join the meeting later on. Uh I'll be chairing um here in this hearing. And I would like to introduce the members of the panel, starting off with the Mr. Tembani Pogula, who is the Chairperson of um uh NERSA as well as a member of this uh the subcommittee, uh the Electricity Regulation Subcommittee. Mr. Pogula, over to you, sir.
Thank you, uh Mr. Mkeze. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Mkeze.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pogula. I'll proceed then and also introduce Madam Temba, Temba Gasemani, who is a part-time regulator member as well as a Chairperson of the Finance Committee, as well as a member of this uh uh Subcommittee amongst other committees that he is a member of within NERSA. Over to you, madam.
Thank you very much, uh Mr. Mkeze. Again, greetings and good afternoon to you, to Mr. Pogula and other ER members as well as our NERSA colleagues and the members of the public. Thanks.
Thank you very much, uh Madam Semani. I also have um uh Advocate Sitole, Nomalanga Sitole, who is the CEO of NERSA, as well as a member of other committees within uh NERSA, including this electricity Subcommittee. Over to you, Madam CEO. I don't seem to have a, um Mr. Mabunda, if you may just help?
Uh I am in the meeting, Chairperson. I was just trying to sit on my camera. Also, I think I'm struggling. There may be a problem with the setup of the camera. Uh but I would like to say good afternoon, Chairperson, members, uh NERSA staff members, and everyone who has joined us for this particular uh public uh hearing this afternoon. Thank you, Chairperson, and over to you.
Thank you very much, uh Advocate Sitole. I'd like to also proceed and uh I'm not so sure if there's another member that I don't have with me here. Mister Mabunda, if you can just-
No.
Madam Masiti, I'm in.
Oh, you're in. Okay, no, thanks. Madam Masiti?
Good morning, Chairperson and members, and good morning to the members of the public. Thank you. You're so good afternoon.
Thank you very much, uh Madam Masiti. We'll then proceed this uh to just uh let everyone that is in attendance, as well as those that are following us through the various live streaming platforms, that this hearing was truly advertised in the Business Day and Bielt uh newspapers, uh NERSA social media platforms, and on the NERSA website. And it is held in accordance with the Energy Regulator Act, in which affected parties are given an opportunity to submit their views and present relevant facts and evidence to the energy regulator. The hearing is governed by the NERSA Rules on Public Hearings, which can be summarized as follows. One, all parties will be required to make their presentations under oath. Two, applicants have the, have been allocated fifteen minutes each to present. Uh we understand that people sometimes have got a lot to to present, but please just try to keep within the allotted time, taking due regard that there are other, others also that need to make their presentations. Three, only members of the panel may ask questions to the presenters. However, members of the public may give uh or email the questions to the public hearings at nersa.org.za, and the panel will decide on how to deal with those questions. Uh may you please uh assist Mister Mabunda by just uh typing uh the the email address on the chat, uh so that people can be able to send these uh uh their their questions for us to to be able to consider. Fourthly, uh should presenters wish to present information they consider confidential, the panel will make a ruling on whether to close the meeting or to have the information submitted in writing. The audio recording of this hearing, which is recorded by the microphones, will be the official record of this meeting. The house rules for this meeting are: One, please mute when not presenting unless requested to speak. Two, always uh switch off your videos or cameras unless requested to switch them on, especially when you are you are the one presenting. Uh we have received four requests to present, and we'll start with William Magnan from EDF South Africa on behalf of Oasis Ararat RFP2Y LTD. Uh may please uh step forward, uh sir, so that you can be able to take the oath, and if you can, please just switch off on your camera, uh because there is an oath you need to, that needs to be administered to you. Mister Mabunda, if you may just assist and and please for the, even for the forthcoming ones, if you can, if all of them ready, so that you can be able to uh promptly move in this meeting, noting uh uh the 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 need for us to be very economic with our time. Mister William?
Good day, Chairperson. Are you there? Yes. Good day, Chairperson. Can you hear me and see me?
I can hear you only now I can see you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any objections in terms of taking the oath?
No.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I solemnly declare that the information that I will give to this panel is the truth and the whole truth.
Thank you. For the record, please state your name, organization, and your designation during.
I'm William Magnan, uh working for EDF, representing uh the project company Oasis Ararat, uh PY LTD. Um and my position is um Project Director for the Oasis Ararat project.
Thank you very much. Uh you may then proceed. You have your fifteen minutes. What is going to happen is that you are going to present, and at the end of your presentation, you will then get a round of questions. If you may please have pen and paper ready, so that you can just be able to take the questions that the panel members will be putting forth uh to you. Uh and then you you then be given an opportunity to respond thereafter. Failing, uh which in some of the instances you may not have the ready answers, you will then be given uh seven days within which to provide written responses to those questions. May we then proceed uh on that basis? I don't I don't know if you've got any any presentation that you need to to beam?
Yes. Can you see my-
Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, my my clock is saying it's fifteen oh eight, and you've got your fifteen minutes. Over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Good day, colleagues. Good day, members of the panel, NERSA colleagues and interested and affected parties. Um so I will go through my presentation of the Oasis Ararat project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that might follow. Um. So um so to begin with, uh some context and background on the project. So the project has been awarded uh to EDF as part of the Battery Energy Storage IPP Program. Uh the objective of this procurement program run by the the IPP Office and the Department of Mineral Resources and Energy is to address uh the pressing need for for grid-scale energy storage um to to pro- to provide storage uh capacity and and ancillary services to to the grid and contribute to the Just Energy Transition Agenda. Um so the project awarded to EDF has been awarded as part of the round two of this uh procurement program. Uh and it is one of seven projects that have been awarded to several um independent power producers. Um and this project is located in the northwest supply area close to the Rustenburg local municipality. Uh so just a quick overview on the project. So the project uh will have three shareholders. Uh EDF would be the lead shareholder and the lead sponsor of the project with forty-nine percent of shareholding. And EDF has partnered with a local black-owned um entity, which is Gib Creed, uh which has a significant experience in investing in in renewable energy. And six percent of the shareholding will be um given to a local community trust with the objective of uh having the value of the project shared with the local communities and and contribute to the development and and um upliftment of the local communities around the project. Um in terms of um shareholdings, so the project company will be fifty percent South African-owned, forty-one percent black-owned, and twelve percent black-women-owned. Um the undertaker of the project uh will be Eskom under fifteen-year power purchase agreement, uh and the payments from Eskom will be guaranteed by um uh a sovereign grantee. Um the project is in the process of um the process, in the application process, to become a strategic important project as recognized by the the Presidential Infrastructure Coordinating Commission and run by Infrastructure SA, uh which uh we believe highlights the the importance of the project for for the the grid and and overall for the the infrastructure development of South Africa. Um on on the technical aspects, so the storage, the the battery energy storage system will be uh will have four hours uh storage capacity um and is expected to to operate and under up to two cycles per day, so two cycles of four hours, with at least forty percent of round-trip efficiency. Um and and this project will provide services to the grid. So a- as said before, uh capacity, um storage, uh and as well as ancillary services to to Eskom, the network operator. And this um this this project will be dispatched uh person to to Eskom, uh Eskom's instruction, and the National Control Center's instruction. Um if we go to the project side, so I said the project is um it will be close to the Rustenburg municipality, uh around six ki- six point five kilometers to the Ararat uh main transmission substation. Uh it is um it it will, its footprint will be uh around eight hectares um on the privately-owned land, um and and it will, the overhead line from the project site to the Eskom Arat Substation will cross uh four land portions, uh all owned and managed by the Royal Bafokeng Nation. Um and and the project uh on top of the building of the the best system itself and the overhead line will also contribute to the up upgrading of the the Ararat uh MTS and a self-built agreement with Eskom. Uh just a brief overview on the technical details. So the the battery, the batteries will be lithium-ion batteries um in in the form of containers. Um and and there will be onsite next to the batteries, um eighty-eight KB substation, uh and connected to this substation onsite, eighty-eight KB overhead lines that will run up to the Arat MTS. And there, the MTS, as mentioned, there will be a significant upgrade of the 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 MTS with busbar extensions, um a new transformer that will be installed, as well as four four current limiting reactors, um and and new feeder base and and operating of uh some equipments in the in the substation. In terms of timelines, so the request for proposal of the the bid window two best IP program was uh launched in December twenty twenty-three. Uh the bid uh bids were submitted in August twenty twenty-four, and the preferred bidder award were were announced in December twenty twenty-four. We're currently in the development phase. Um and this phase should run until September uh twenty twenty-five, subject to potential uh delays. Um and and the start of construction at this date is um is set to happen in September twenty twenty-five for twenty-one months, and the commercial operation date would be May twenty twenty-seven. Um so this this um project will will contribute significantly to the the socio-economic development uh of the of the communities as a part of it, as as part of the the bid submitted to the the DMRI. Um the project has committed to to several um uh socio-economic um actions. Uh so first of which is the uh value sharing and and giving a community trust six percent of the the project's shareholding. There will be also direct socio-economic commitments that will um so share a part of the revenue of the project will directly flow to the local communities. Um the project has also committed to um maximizing and procure South African products uh and and services during both construction and operation. Project will also contribute to job creation, enterprise and supplier developments, skills development, and preferential procurement. And these uh this these commitments uh have been um so submitted by the project at at bid submission and are now legally binding for the project. Uh and they will be audited uh by an independent third party during construction and operation. So and and this initiative will be driven by EDF, but in close consultation with all the local communities' stakeholders to make sure that these commitments uh achieve their objective of of contributing to the 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 upliftment of the the local communities. Uh and and a quick zoom also on the fire risk management, which was a concern addressed by one of the the person that shared comments on the the project. Um so there there will be very strict fire risk management processes. Uh so first of all, the project will obviously strictly adhere to all laws um pertaining to to environment, health, safety, and heritage. Um the project has also been through an environmental authorization process, and as part of this uh as as drafted and and presented a comprehensive environmental management plan that will be implemented during the the lifetime of the project. Um and 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 the project, and this fire management plan, we will include, uh among others, um so the fact, and you can see on the right, the different elements. Uh so this is not the comprehensive list, but aims at giving a a good understanding um and view of this fire management plan and and giving uh co- confidence to to all interested and affected parties that that the fire management and overall safety of the project is a is a top priority of um of the consortium developing this project. Um so that that would be it um for for my presentation. Um and I'm happy to to answer to any questions uh any colleagues on the call might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Magnan. I think you you did save us some time, and that is highly appreciated. Um maybe then uh proceed to my panel members here. Any questions uh to Mister Magnan by way of uh raising your hands so that I can be able to see? Thank you very much. I've got Mister Pogula. Uh over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chairperson. May I just check that, I mean, when it comes to uh lithium-ion batteries uh uh that have been constructed, probably Australia gives us a good example, and climate-wise, it's also similar to the South African air conditions. I- is there any history of these fire outbreaks? And if there is, could you give us an indication of how often these fires have broken up or have been stopped from breaking up? Thank you.
I don't see any other raised hand. Uh Mister Abunda, please just alert me if there's any. Um okay, I think Mister Magnan, if you can also just respond to with this kind of a facility, what is, what could also just go wrong? I'm just putting for uh uh known like an open question to see what could possibly go wrong? And what are you putting, what measures are you putting, have you put in place for those uh risks that are associated with this kind of an operation? I'll leave it at that. May please just respond to those two questions.
Thank you very much for the questions, and that's indeed very, very good and relevant questions for this kind of projects. Um so um fir- first of all, uh indeed, so lithium-ion batteries have a risk of fire, but that's actually the case for any kind of the project. Um but the specificity of lithium-ion batteries um is that the the fire needs to be managed in a specific way. And 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 what um in terms of history first to answer to that question. Um so what we've observed in the recent study uh on on the worldwide battery energy storage system is that the the best uh failure incident rate has has significantly decreased uh between in the last ten years. Um and it has dropped um from nine point two failures per gigawatt in twenty eighteen to around zero point two in twenty twenty-three. Um and this improvement uh is attributed to to advancement in safety standards um that are implemented by the battery suppliers, um and and stronger designs and and operational protocols. Um so what, so so there is a risk indeed um of of uh fire and what is done, and there's several um I can maybe share my screen. There's many uh protocols that are put in place. Um and 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 there are the the following. So so first, the best containers are sealed and and non- non-acceptable accessible to to the personnel. So it means that the uh reduces the risk for for the people on site. Uh there's uh redundant smoke and heat detectors and gas sensors within uh the containers uh and and temperature monitoring system. There's fire alarms, and there's um trained operation team to respond in case of emergency and to fight fires. There's setbacks that are between the containers to ensure that if there is one container that um can have a fire issue or overheating issue, it does not affect the 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 containers next to it. And there's even significant, even bigger setbacks between the project itself and the surrounding areas um to make sure that that there is uh no chance that the fire can can spread. Um and and then there's um, yeah, so so that that's the main measures. So um so yes, it's a risk, um and it's a risk that's um um well identified and and for which uh significant mitigation measures that are are put in place to ensure that uh it cannot uh affect the 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 project at all if if it occurs on on one container and and not the the surrounding areas. Um so I hope it covers your your questions.
Thank you. Um so in the main, the issue, the things that could go wrong, it just around the fire risk in the main. Am I right?
Yes, that's what I covered.
Okay. Uh there is nothing else that you would like to to highlight?
Uh so so, I mean, it's it's a project, so um a renewable energy project. So as for solar and wind batteries, uh so there there could be security risk, and there as well, there there will be many measures that are put in place to to ensure that there is no uh security uh incident that could happen on the project site and that could uh uh create risk for 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 the the communities or the the personnel on site. Um but for me, that's the probably the two main risks that that are worth highlighting. Then there are obviously technical risks as well that are part of this kind of project, but that are also mitigated by the fact that we have very strong engineering and technical teams that are uh put um uh ensuring that the designs and and the the contractors and suppliers that are working on the project are highly qualified and have great track record to to ensure that to mitigate any any risk around uh this um construction and 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 technical risk on the project.
Thank you very much. I can see also that Mister Pogula is happy, indicated has has up not happy happy in terms of of the 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 satisfaction that you have responded to the question. Uh from my side, I'd like also to thank you and say to you, uh Mexi Pogu, uh we'll uh then proceed to the next one. Uh please. From Infinity Power Holdings and Pele Green Energy, Neil Vessels. Is Neil Vessels there?
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon. Just trying to get the camera set up.
Okay, no, it's fine then. I think we are we are done from your side, Magnan, so you may switch off your 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 video camera. We'll then um proceed with you, uh Mister Vessels. Do you have any objections in taking the oath?
I do not.
All right, thank you. May please then raise your right hand and affirm the following. Uh do you solemnly declare that if the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
For the record, please state your name, organization, and designation during.
Uh my name is Neil Vessels. I am a Business Development Manager representing Infinity Power.
Thank you very much. Uh you may beam your presentation, and you have your fifteen minutes uh within which you need to finish with your presentation, and then you can take the round of questions as we have seen it happening with Mister Magnan.
Thank you very much.
You may proceed, sir.
Yeah, just want to confirm you can see my presentation?
Yes. Can you see the presentation?
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairperson Mister Mkeze, members of NERSA, and affected and interested parties of the public. Um I will be presenting the Halfout Solar Power Plant on behalf of Infinity Power and Pele Green Energy. So just some background of where this project came from. So um it is a project from the REEP round seven. So in December twenty twenty-four, uh Consortium of Infinity Power Holding South Africa and Pele Green Energy was awarded Preferred Bidder Status for six solar PV projects totaling one thousand two hundred and eighty megawatts in the seventh round of the Government REEP program. Now, these projects include um the Halfout project, which we will be presenting on a little bit um later, which is a two hundred and forty megawatt um AC solar PV project located in the Limpumalanga Province um near Witbank. It also includes Onus Support One solar PV and Onus Support Solar Two PV, uh two hundred and twenty and one hundred and ninety megawatts AC respectively. Those projects form part of the Ngweli PV cluster, and the and they are located in the northwest province near Rustenburg. Then lastly, we've got our Copper Solar PV Project, two hundred and forty megawatts, Palladium Solar PV Project, two hundred and forty megawatts, and Vinadium Solar PV Project of a hundred and fifty megawatts. Um we refer to those as the Spitscope Cluster, and that is located in the Limpopo Province near northern. So Eskom can expect significant cost savings over the life um cycle of the projects on account of the highly competitive tariffs offered by the developers, which results in the easing of financial pressures on Eskom's balance sheets. Then I just want to go into a little bit about the the sponsors and the and the um in the consortium. So the Halfout Solar Power Plant is fifty-one percent held by Infinity Power and forty-nine percent held by Pele. Now, APHSA um is a hundred percent held by Infinity Power Holdings. Uh Infinity Power was established in twenty nineteen through a joint venture between Egypt's Infinity and Masdar, being the Abu Dhabi Future Energy Company. And they were set up to target um power generation and distribution projects in the renewable energy space in Africa. And Infinity Power currently employs over five hundred and fifty people worldwide. Then for on the Pele side, Pele Green Energy is an RPP specializing in the development, financing, construction, ownership, and operation of renewable energy projects in South Africa and across Africa. Pele was established in twenty uh in two thousand and nine and has participated in multiple rounds of the REEP programs as well as other procurement programs, and they've contributed to the growth of South Africa's renewable energy sector. Then some more on the shareholding on the Infinity side. So as mentioned, Infinity Power Holding South Africa is a hundred percent held by Infinity Power Holding, which in turn forty-nine percent um held through Masdar, uh which is a hundred percent held by the Abu Dhabi Future Energy Company. And on the other side, the fifty-one percent shareholding comes through um Egypt's uh Infinity Energy. Then on the Pele side, um the Pele SDB thirty-two is held one one hundred percent by Pele Green Energy and in turn one hundred percent by the Pele Energy Group. Then just a bit about um the sponsor track record. Um on the Infinity Power side, there is just under five hundred megawatts of operational solar and wind farms um located in Egypt. Uh in South Africa, there is six hundred and twenty-four megawatts of operational wind farms, as well as a uh a hundred and fifty-eight megawatts uh wind farm uh located in Senegal. Then on the Pele side, um in South Africa, they've got nine hundred and twenty-five megawatts of operational um solar and wind farms. And currently under construction in South Africa, um Pele has one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven megawatts, which um is made up of best wind and solar PV. Then just to um present a bit on the Halfout Solar Plant. Um so as mentioned, it's a it's a solar PV plant. We will be using bifacial modules on single-axis trackers. Um it's two hundred and forty megawatts AC, uh which makes up to about two hundred and eighty-five megawatts um DC or installed. The plant will produce six hundred and eighty-five thousand megawatts uh megawatt hours per year. Um as mentioned, it's located in the Limpumalanga Province, within the Nkangala District, within the MLFLENI Local Municipality. Um the project- Um, the project is on private land, um, on various, um, land parcels. And as you can see in this diagram here, you can see the footprint and its vicinity in terms of the closest surrounding, um, communities. The grid connection of the solar PV plant will be to the Vulcan Main Transmission Substation, seen over here. Um, the offtake agreement, um, being through the REAP program will be, um, on a twenty-year PPA with the National Transmission Company of South Africa. Then in terms of timelines, the scheduled financial close date is expected on the twenty-third of September this year. Uh, thereafter, construction will soon, uh, will soon begin. Um, starting in October, uh, going all the way till August twenty twenty-seven, which then, um, the commercial operations date, um, is expected on the twenty-third of August twenty twenty-seven. Then just a bit on the permitting and approvals. So the following permits and approvals have been obtained for the Half Vault Solar, um, Power Plant. The environmental authorization, uh, the DWS, uh, general authorization for water, rezoning, um, sorry, on the rezoning side, the DAFF no objection. Um, that is through the Solar Act, uh, the the land use approval was obtained. Other permits include the main site land claims, the section fifty-three approval, the SKA slash SARAO approval, the SAWS, um, in terms of way leaves, there is the Escom distribution and and Escom transmission approvals. Um, in terms of roads and traffic, uh, there's approval received for the access road. Uh, there was no objection from Transnet and in terms of telecommunications, the approvals were uh, or consent was received from Celsi, MTN, Liquid Intelligent Technology, Semtech, Falcom, Vodacom and Escom. Then just a bit on the economic development commitments, um. So through REAP, um, it has been designed to facilitate the procurement of renewable energy, contribute towards social, economic and environmentally sustainable growth and to further stimulate increased local participation and economic empowerment in the South African renewable energy industry. So, um, specifically, the Half Vault Solar, uh, project received an ED score of seven point two seven out of ten in the evaluation, uh, which obviously contributed to the suc- uh, the successful award of the project. Um, so a breakdown of some of the economic development commitments which we have made, um, in terms of job creation, there are commitments to SA citizens, black people, skilled and specialized skilled black people, citizens in local communities, black youth, black women. Then in terms of, um, other commitments, we've got local content during construction, uh, sorry, local content spend during construction and operations, um, participation of black men and women in ownership, management control, skills development, as well as preferential procurement, enterprise development and supply development. So we have made a deep commitment towards, um, South Africa's sustainable growth by demonstrating upfront commitment to economic development initiatives that empowers local communities and creates local jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vessels. I think you did save us a little bit of time and that is appreciated. I would then like to take this opportunity to give my, uh, fellow panel members an opportunity to pose questions to you. Um, and then if you just have a piece of paper, then you can just note the questions and you'll respond once, uh, all the questions have been posed. Over to you, my fellow, uh, panel members. By showing of hands, raising of hands if any has got a question. Uh, I see one hand raised by Mr. Pugula. Over to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Makise. Uh, Mr. Vessels, can you just talk a bit about the objections that have been lodged and then what your actions have been? Thank you.
I don't see any other hand. May you just please, uh, respond to that particular question, uh, Mr. Vessels?
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, if I may, I have representatives from Norton Rose on the call as well. If I may direct, um, the answering of the question to to them.
If that is the case, I will have to swear them in, please.
Yeah, that would be fine.
May they please step forward and switch on their cameras?
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Matthew Ash from Norton Rose Fulbright. I have no objection to taking the oath.
Thank you. May please raise your right hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do so solemnly declare the evidence I will give will be the truth and the whole truth.
For the record, please state your name, organization and designation, Darren.
Thank you, Chair. My name is, uh, Matthew Ash. I'm a senior director at the firm Norton Rose Fulbright, South Africa. We represent the sponsors, um, Infinity Power Holdings and Pele Green Energy in this particular project. If I may, um, uh, answer the question, uh, directly. So the response to the objection has been formally filed with, um, with the regulator, um, uh, on Tuesday evening, within the time period, um, stipulated. Uh, if I may just record, quite a short period afforded to us. We received the, uh, objection, uh, Monday afternoon. Um, and we were given until closer business the following day. So just over twenty-four hours in order to, in in order to respond to, um, an objection which could have, um, well, had an opportunity of four weeks to to prepare. That being the case, um, we we do say that if there's anything further that, um, that our response to that objection does not traverse and that the committee would still like to have um, elucidated that we would like an opportunity to amplify that objection if necess- I say the the response to that objection if necessary. Very briefly and in summary, um, the, we we believe the answer speaks for itself. Um, we we are somewhat perplexed by the objection on the following basis. Um, there seems to be, um, uh, and, uh, a concern, um, raised with regard to the sustainability um, uh, and viability of the project. Uh, we, the the nature of the response effectively is, well, this has been carefully evaluated as far as the RFP. Um, there are, um, extremely onerous, um, uh, requirements and commitments which the, uh, sponsors and the project have had to, uh, comply with. In fact, the sponsors and project have exceeded those requirements, hence the award of preferred, uh, preferred bidder. If the objector had a concern about these particular aspects, the forum in which to have addressed that would have been at the time of award of the project and taking that up with the DMRE. We don't believe that as part of this application for generation license process that it is appropriate for that concern to be raised here. The other, um, inquiry seems to be in connection with the environmental authorization. Again, as has been, um, uh, raised or in fact recorded by Mr. Vessels, the environmental authorization has been obtained. If there is a question or concern or issue with the environmental authorization and the objector is, um, uh, should take this up with the relevant, uh, conferring authority, that being the Department of Environmental, uh, Department of Environmental Forestry and Fisheries, uh, not in this particular forum. The same goes for the section fifty-three consent. If I may just pause there for a second, is that if the committee has careful reference to the diagrams that have been appended to both the objection and to the answer, it's very clear that there is no, um, spatial impingement by the project on the mining rights area of the, um, of the objector. Very clear that the the objector's mining rights are in no way impinged by the development. The high watermark we have, we have elucidated in some detail in the objection that doesn't bear repeating here, but we have addressed it. So, um, and further in this regard, if there is a concern or a an inquiry regarding the section fifty-three consent, the proper forum for, um, the objector to 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 deal with that is with the DMRE and with the regional manager, not in this particular forum where for compliance purposes, the applicant has to demonstrate it has obtained, uh, well, it has, it's it's application is legally compliant. The committee will be well aware that in fact it has considered and awarded generation licenses even when environmental authorization hasn't been granted. But all it needs to be demonstrated is that environmental authorization process, uh, uh, um, process is in process. Um, so what, what, what we are saying in response is that the, um, the application is legally compliant. The forum, if the objector has, um, any concerns, is elsewhere to be raised and not in this particular forum. And we submit that being so compliant that, um, this committee should recommend to the regulator that the generation license should be granted.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Ash for the for the response, uh, uh, Mr. Pugula, you covered in terms of the response?
Yes, thank you. I am Chairperson.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Ash and Mr. Vessels. Um, I think you you also have got seven days post this hearing to augment what you have submitted to us, uh, in any shape or form. Um, with that, then this concludes the part for, uh, Infinity Power Holdings and Pele Green Energy, uh, presentation and will then proceed to the presentation to be made, uh, by Madini and Workman's Attorneys, uh, by Kira South. I hope I'm pronouncing that name correctly. Uh, we'll then proceed, uh, to Ki- Kira South.
Good afternoon, uh, Chair and the members of NUSA. Um, thank you.
Thank you. May just please assist by, um, switching on your camera. So you can take the oath if you don't have any objections in taking the oath?
I am trying to switch it on, but it's not letting me.
Is it too special to help me or, yeah? Do you have any objections in taking the oath?
No, I do not.
Thank you very much, uh, uh.
It's Kira.
Madam South, am I, is, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
It's Kira.
Kira, okay, no, thank you very much for that, Kira. Um, since you don't have any objection in taking the oath, please, please, uh, raise your right hand and affirm the following. Um, do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Um, please, uh, for the record, uh, uh, can I just give us your name, your organization and your designation, Darren?
No problem. Uh, my name is Kira South. I am a director at Worksmith's Attorneys and we have, we I have been appointed by Madini Mining Proprietary Limited to represent them in this matter. Um, Ms. Makise, um, I'm not sure if you are aware, but we did actually submit to one of your colleagues that there are, in this presentation that we're about to make, there will be, um, four speakers. So, um, I will, I will be leading it with, um, and will be supported by, uh, two environmental consultants and a technical mining consultant. And I would be very grateful if you could swear them in now as well prior to our commencement of our fifteen minutes so that, um, they can speak to their applicable slides.
Thank you, Kira. Um, I would then proceed, if you may just please, uh, switch on your, your, your cameras so you can be able to take the oath. Are they with you or in the same office or elsewhere?
Uh, they are elsewhere. They should be switching on their cameras shortly. Um, they might just also be struggling like I do to switch on my camera. If we could give them a couple of seconds, I'd be very grateful.
Chair, just just to assist, um, they are all, uh, visible now.
Oh, okay.
Are you able to see them, Chair?
No, I'm not able to see them. Let me just go to the next, uh, page. Yes, I can see Rihanna Panayi, you know. Rihanna, do you have any objections in taking the oath?
I don't have an objection.
Thank you very much. May please then raise your right hand and con- and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Uh, for the record, please state your name, organization and designation, Darren, please.
I'm Rihanna Pandano. I am with Eco Elementum. I am an independent environmental assessment practitioner and we have been appointed to assist with regards the regulated processes that environmental authorization applications should follow.
Thank you. Um, let me then proceed to your colleague. Um, I'm seeing here, Heno Engelbrach.
That's correct.
Yeah, sir, do you have any objections in taking the oath?
Good afternoon, sir. No, not at all.
Thank you. May please raise your, raise your right hand then and affirm the following. Do you solemnly solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I agree.
Uh, for the record, please state your name, organization and your designation, Darren.
My name is Heno Engelbrach. I'm also with Eco Elementum, independent environmental assessment practitioner, appointed by Madini Mining to assist with the presentation.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll then proceed to Waldo Sonnebul. Um, Waldo, uh, may just, uh, activate your, 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 your audio.
Sorry, got it. Yeah.
Yes. Um, do you have any objections in taking the oath?
I don't.
Thank you very much. Um, please raise your right hand and affirm the following. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, please state your name, organization and designation, Darren.
Okay, uh, Waldo Sonnebul. I'm representing Madini Mining in the Technical Services Department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sonnebul.
Thank you.
Um, just Kira to chat with you, is it, uh, is the whole team?
Uh, yes, that is the whole team. We do also have the, uh, head of legal for the Inter-Africa Group, which, of which Madini Mining forms a part of, um, on the poll as well. And although she is not a primary speaker, if necessary, um, she may also wish to at some point step in, um, and and answer a question if required. Um, however, this is the primary team that that we would like to commence with. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, so, so, uh, in, and, and when we need to get it responding. So you you have a presentation with you?
I do. If I could just share my screen.
If you can just give it, please.
Can you see my screen?
Yes. Uh, if may just put it on presentation mode.
I put it on presentation. Um. I don't know if I put it on presentation, right? That should be easy.
Are you winning?
I'm not.
Okay, okay, listen, listen to your mouse.
This one, there we go.
That one, that one, yeah.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, that's it. Uh, ma'am, over to you then. You've got your fifteen minutes with the, for the whole team. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, so as I have already introduced myself, my name is Kira South. I'm a director at Worksmith's Attorneys. We have been appointed by Madini Mining to assist them with this presentation and this matter. Um, Madini Mining, we wish to put on record that Madini Mining only became aware of, uh, this project on the second of May, when it was published by the, the advertisement was published by NUSA um, in the high, in the Middleburg Observer and in the Business Day, which was on the second of May. Shortly thereafter, um, we Shortly thereafter, um, we, or my, my client did go and procure a copy of the application lodged by Hifalt. And we also requested a copy of the environmental authorization and the section fifty-three approval, which we note has been obtained as per, uh, page twenty-two of the application from the Enviro- Hifalt's Environmental Assessment Practitioner. To date, that, that was some two weeks before we lodged the objection and to date we have still not received a response, which is why we have lodged the objection. The objection obviously, um, was lodged, um, based on the information that we have at the time, which is really not much information at all. Um, and, uh, you know, we, we would require quite a lot of information to assess whether there is going to be an impact on my client's mining operations, um, going, going forward. We also note from the previous speaker that there seems to have been a response that has been submitted. We have not, we have not seen that response. And obviously my client's rights are to respond there too, um, are remain reserved. Okay, so to start off, this is, um, how the presentation we're going to run. We're going to start with, uh, an introduction. We have, uh, set out four main grounds of objections. We've also set out our, a couple of clarification requests, which we may wish to amplify in the future going forward. Um, the social economic commitments, the alignment and social development aspect as well as a conclusion. I would also just like to state that this, um, presentation is in support of the objection that we did submit and we, uh, would request the members of NERSA to please, uh, review that objection in its totality. So to start off with, Madini Mining is a mining right holder. Um, and it holds, it, it has been a mining right holder for quite a number of years and it holds a mining right um, over, uh, several portions of the farm, Claywarter, and which area was extended in, under a section one or two application filed in, in twenty-twenty-two. And we note that from the Middleburg Observer and the Business Day, uh, public, publication or advertisement published by NERSA that Hifalt is, uh, wishes for the profit, for the project to be over the, the properties that are adjacent to Madini's mining operations. If I can just put it, um, in, in illustrative format, the yellow, the yellow line is, uh, Madini's current mining area and the red outline is Hifalt's, uh, proposed project area. At this point in time, I'm going to hand over to Waldo, who is part of the technical mining team to take you through the first ground of objection.
Thanks Kara. Okay, guys, um, so from my side, uh, our concern is basically, um, like, uh, we are neighboring, uh, farm to your, to your, um, area that you want to, um, put on the solar plant. So from a technical side, um, my, my biggest concern is, uh, what the mining activities will do to your, to your solar plant. Uh, mainly focusing on our, um, uh, block blasting activities, uh, as the, as you are well in our five hundred meter blasting radius. Um, and as well as the, the, the air impact, um, vibrations, uh, on a, on a two kilometer radius, um, around our farm. Um, as, as, as you will note that we, we do have, uh, all the mining rights and all the legal stuff in place blasting, um, permissions and stuff for the hundred meter and five hundred meter blasting. Um, so we just, uh, just want to highlight, um, the effect that it's going to have on your area. Uh, next slide, Kara, thanks. Okay, um, on this map, um, you'll see the, uh, where the mining activities is going to take place. Um, we've done the liberty to just to include our five hundred meter and two kilometer, uh, radius around our area. Um, so you can see, it's, it's quite a, quite a big, covering quite a big area, um, in, in, in your, in your red area. Uh, next, Sonne, Kara. Okay, so basically, um, our grounds of objection is basically our, our routine, um, blasting activities. Like I've mentioned that previously, um, a lot of noise and a lot of dust is also going to be, uh, uh, part of this, this activities of ours. Um, a lot of ground vibration due to all the, um, the, the mining equipment, all heavy machinery. Um, and then, uh, just the, the road overlaps that we also, um, might encounter along the way. Thanks, thanks Kara.
Um, thank you, Waldo. I think the second ground of objection is going to be presented by Rihanna.
Thank you, Kara. Um, as I said previously, I'm Rihanna Panayno from Eco Elementum. And we were part of the team of, um, independent environmental assessment practitioners that assisted Madini Mining throughout the years with obtaining all their relevant licenses. Um, so Madini is, as previously mentioned, in possession of all the required documentation and has been for quite a few years at this stage. Um, so Madini would need to consider Hifalt's environmental authorization and basic assessment report carefully to understand the magnitude and impact of Madini's future mining activities on the solar plant. Um, as, as an environmental practitioner, um, and going through the process, in order to obtain an environmental authorization, thorough public participation would need to be done with all landowners and adjacent landowners. Um, and as Kara stated at the beginning, before she started the presentation, um, Madini was only made aware of this solar farm that is proposed adjacent to the mining right, which then poses the question, was the public participation for the environmental authorization that was awarded undertaken correctly as the adjacent landowners weren't at that stage notified of the proposed activities? Um, we did also request formally the EAE, um, that was granted and the section fifty-three as previously mentioned, and have not yet, um, been provided with any of these documents to have a look at, at what happened during the environmental authorization process. Um, I think also Neil, um, from the previous presenter had this on his slide and I think there was more authorizations obtained since this application was submitted. So we did base our objection on what was in this application. And again, we posed the question, why was the neighboring landowners not made aware of the application during the environmental assessment process that had to be done according to the National Environmental Management Act?
Thank you, Rihanna. Um, so just to cover the third ground of objection, um, Madini is obviously very concerned about the health and safety considerations of a, a solar plant being established right next door to its, uh, mine, which, and, and its future mining activities. The mine is for a coal mine, so naturally there will be blasting for which, for which Madini does have all of the requisite authorizations. Um, the, although the, uh, project is not over the mining right boundary as per say, um, con- as consideration does need to be given to the fact that under the NPRDA, which is the Mineral and Petroleum Resources Development Act, the definition of mining area is much wider than simply the mining boundary set out in the mining right and it does actually include the surrounding areas. And therefore Madini has a responsibility under the Mine Health and Safety Act for that greater area, which would naturally extend onto the Hifalt properties. The reason why, um, as an example of why our client is concerned is firstly, if there is a blasting and there happens to be a fly rock incident, although, you know, all, all can, um, all, uh, uh, measures will be taken to, to limit that as far as possible in accordance with their blasting permit. There may be a circumstance where a fly rock, uh, hits a solar panel, damages a solar panel or even, uh, hi- hits somebody who is an employer of Hifalt who is attending to one of the solar panels in the plant and either injuring or killing that person, in which case our client has serious concerns, not only from a financial, uh, uh, perspective, but also from, you know, the perspective of, of injuring or, or causing the death of a person. Hence, uh, the lodgment of the objection and the concerns that Madini has. So that also then just leads us to the fourth ground of objection, which we'd just like, uh, to make members of NERSA aware is obviously that the Madini mining right has been there for very many years. And its, its right was granted to it by the state. And obviously it's, you know, there is the, the principle in law, which is the rights that exist prior in time, um, should be considered first. So we also just wanted to make, uh, the committee, uh, aware of that. Um, I am now going to hand over to Heno to take you through some of the clarifications that we have, that Madini has requested in the objection and which we, uh, and Madini would like to consider to see the impact, possible impact that its mining operations may have on the plant, on the project and, and vice versa.
Good afternoon all. As, uh, previously stated by my colleague, when we prepared for this, uh, the table that we just showed on our presentations showed that the land use, um, authorization was still in process. Um, so also the water use was still in process. We learned today that those has been obtained already. So these clarifications was based on that to get the necessary information to adequately prepare. But the clarifications we required was on the land use compatibility and spatial planning, whether the proposed development has been assessed for compatibility, considering Madini is an open cost mining operation next door to it. Um, the land use compatibility and zoning conflicts, whether the spatial development and the integrated development programs and plans have been consulted and whether it conforms to, um, the mining that's adjacent to it and then grid integration, um, considering the operation is quite electricity intensive with a wash plant on site. Um, just a confirmation that the connection to the Escon group will not impair supply stability or the voltage regulation affecting the nearby mining activities and that the proposed solar plant will not compromise Madini's existing electricity supply, obviously. Next slide, please Kara. On the socio-economic front, um, Madini notes that, uh, Hifalt's commitment to comply with the REB round seven economic development criteria and job creation targets are high level and without clear localization context. Could be in the absence of the documents that haven't been shared with us to date. But to Madini, according to your request, the disclosure of the local procurement targets, a summary of the job creation plan specific to the construction with, with the operational phases, and then clarity on whether the enterprise and supplier development support will include businesses from the mining affected communities, specifically considering the great investment Madini is already making in terms of their social and labor plan as well. Then as a final slide from my side, I think, um, just, um, continuing from this, we just wanted to state that in terms of the National Environmental Management Act, of which the, um, authorization has now already been obtained, that a risk averse and cautious approach is applied, which takes into account the limits of current knowledge about the consequences of decisions and actions that, given that it's an open cost mining operation next to a solar farm. And then in terms of the Mineral Petroleum Resources Development Act, shortly referred to as the NPRDA, um, to promote employment and advance the social and economic welfare of all South Africans. Kara, and over to you for the conclusion.
Thank you, Heno. Um, I think I have about a minute and a half left, which is more than enough time to conclude. Um, in, in summary, Madini wishes to place on record that it, it does support renewable energy development. Um, provided obviously that that renewable energy development contributes meaningly, meaningfully to the local economy as, as Heno has just advised, which goes to the definition of sustainable development um, and which complies with both all of the constitution, NIMA and the NPRDA. Um, in summary, Madini, uh, needs quite a lot of clarification and a lot of information and time to assess that information, um, if it does and when it does receive same, in order to assess what impact the ne- a neighboring, uh, solar plant may have on its operations. Um, and vice versa, and, and whether, you know, Madini's operations would have any impact on the solar plant, for example. Um, I, one of the other questions, uh, from the, from the environmental team that, that was previously raised was also whether we wanted to know whether Hifalt has actually conducted any assessments to see what impact a neighboring mining operations would have on its project. And if, if such information does exist, Madini would very much appreciate to receiving a copy of that information for its consideration. The bottom line is ultimately that our, our client is very concerned that a neighboring plant may hinder or impact its, its, uh, proposed mining activities or future mining activities, as I should rather say. Um, and that is the reason why we have responded to the, uh, advertisement that NERSA placed in the newspaper on the second of May, um, and in this, in this particular forum. Uh, that is it from me.
Thank you very much, Madam Sot. I must say that yourself and the team, you have done very well in terms of managing your time despite being a, 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 a team comprising, uh, four, uh, persons. Um, with that, I would just like to then give my panel members an opportunity to ask you questions. And if you may, uh, from all, all of you from your side have pen and paper ready to take questions and once, uh, I'll then give an opportunity, uh, to, to respond to those questions. I can see Madam Nonfundo's, uh, Nonfundo Masetti's hand up. I don't see any other hand. Let's proceed on that basis. Over to you, Madam Masetti.
Thank you, Chairperson, and, uh, thank you to the presenters. Chairperson, just one question. And this is the question of jurisdiction. Um, given the fact that the environmental permit has already been authorized by the relevant authority. Now, NERSA has to consider this application on the basis of its, uh, limited mandate insofar as environmental issues are concerned. Now, um, if then there is no compliance or significant compliance with uh, section fifty-three of the NPRDA, I would like to understand what legal grounds, uh, would NERSA have to not, uh, grant the license that is applied for, given the provisions of the Electricity Regulation Act and given the limited mandate that we have in terms of that, what are the grounds? What are, what would be the legal grounds for NERSA to reject the application on the basis of non-compliance with section fifty-three? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Masetti. Uh, the question is, uh, clear and straightforward. Um, then I will hand over to Advocate Chole and then Mr. Pukula, in that order, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chairperson. And my, my question is linked to, um, Ms. Masetti. My, but slightly different to just ask, um, the team for Madini if they have done a check with the relevant department that deals with, uh, most of the issues that they've raised, which are environmental, um, in the objection, that is the DFFE. Because I didn't pick this up from their presentation that they've done. Any check in terms of the processes that the, whether the, the applicant has followed the the required, uh, processes, because they've just, uh, indicated their objection without highlighting whether they have also done, um, their checks with the relevant department as to whether this applicant, uh, did follow all the processes and they were done in accordance with the required thresholds. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Advocate Chole. Um, Mr. Pukula, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chairperson. Uh, uh, may I just find out in the points that you want clarification from, from the applicant form and specifically the one around the, the, the grid integration, which, which parts of the grid code, which really deals with the grid integration, anywhere whether there's a mine close by or, and NRSO four-eight, which also deals with voltage regulation and, uh, and, 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 uh, other quality of supply, which, which part concerns you in this particular, um, uh, installation that, that you think it is not going to be, uh, it, it, it's not going to adhere to, 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 to those, uh, codes and standards that have been set for integrating power plants into the system? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pukula. I can see that there is a hand also from Madam Masetti. Uh, Madam Masetti, if you want to also chip in? Over to you, ma'am. Or it's a lingering hand? May unmute, ma'am?
It could be a lingering one, Chair. Let's proceed. If she wants, uh, to augment, she will come back.
Thank you very much. We'll then, uh, proceed on that basis. Uh, maybe before you, 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 I, I hand over to you to, to respond, uh, Madam South in your team. I note that as things turn, you are the one that are going to be impacting, that could be, let me put it like this, impact the operations of, um, the, the renewable energy plant negatively instead of the other way around. What only could be a challenge is maybe going forward in terms of your future mining activities. Um, understand that you, you are taking a responsible stance. So. So, I just want to understand if my my understanding of the operations is correct, that you are the ones as the mine, Madini, Madini is the one that is negatively impacting, that could possibly negatively impact the operations of the renewable energy plant and all the other way around? Yeah, may I just then respond to all the questions please?
Thank you Mr. Mekizé, there were partially questions there too, you might need to just remind us which parts to respond to, to respond to your last question that you had, so yes, Madini is concerned that we could have a negative impact on the project itself, which would have consequences for Madini, which is why you know we are an interested and affected party in this and why we do have concerns. And in addition to which, if for example there is going to be an impact from a fly off incident or you know something within the blast radius and as a result of that our client has to potentially look at, you know, doing something about its, you know, future mining activities and that does actually negatively impact on Madini and its business as well. So it is a two-way thing, we are worried about the impact we will have there but also that the impact we will have there will have a knock-on impact on Madini if that makes any sense. Okay, I'm going to move on to the second question, I think that there were some questions about the environmental process. I'm going to ask Rihanna and Hannah to step in here. Effectively what we did do is as soon as we became aware of it, we did reach out to and we then we procured a copy of the Hifalt's application. We then sought the environmental authorization and the section fifty-three MPRDA approval had been granted. We had reached out to the duly authorized environmental assessment practitioner, which is ordinary practices to reach out to them first and request copies of those documents to which we have not had a response. And given the time constraints, that is why Madini has lodged this objection in order to make NERSA, the members of NERSA aware that there is actually an active mine next door and to bear that in mind, you know, in considering the application. Hannah and Rihanna, do you have anything to add?
Yes Cara, thank you, I think just from my side to add, another question related to did we contact the relevant authorities to to ask them was the process undertaken correctly? And I think we need to go back a few steps. The relevant authorities can only make a decision on what is provided to them. And if the information that is provided to them is not complete, then obviously their decision is based on incomplete information. So yes, talking to the relevant authorities, they would say, well yes, we received all the documents and everything was correct from what we received. However, during an EIA process or during an environmental application process, there's a few instances where the neighboring landowners need to be consulted as per the guidelines and as per the regulations. And as I did state previously, Madini was never directly consulted as a neighboring landowner and a neighboring mine on, look, we are planning to do this and this is going to happen next door. Do you have any comments or queries? And then that's during the application process, following the application process, all registered interested and affected parties will have to be made aware of the decision that was made. So if Madini wasn't made aware of the project in the first place, they couldn't register as an interested and affected party. Which then following they would not be made aware of the EA being granted. And this is why as Cara said, we are using this platform just to make NERSA aware of that there might be possible implications for Madini mine should this project go ahead.
Mr. Mekizé, I can't remember if that was all the questions or if there was another question that you needed. Our response to apologies, there were about four or five questions that were given to us at the same time.
Yeah, there was a question on the grid integration to see which grid code provisions are you basing it upon? And if there is any leads around the mine that you were referring to? And then the main thrust of the question around the environmental objection is one of saying, on what legal grounds would NERSA for example reject this application on the basis of a provision of another act being the MPRDA, section fifty-three in this instance? It was just to try to understand from my side, in your understanding, how then would NERSA reject this application or not approve an application based on another piece of legislation that should be dealt with, has got its own process to deal with? That was the main thrust of the question, if you may just respond to that please ma'am, in the team.
Sure, so I suppose it goes to what Rihanna was saying is that we only, we saw, the first time I became aware of this was in the newspaper and the newspaper simply said, if you have comments, please submit them to NERSA for consideration. And obviously we do have comments as we have already demonstrated. And that is, I'm having a look at the notice that is attached to our objection as annex two and it was published in the Middleburg Observer and it says, all interested and affected, all interested parties and or any member of the public may lodge written objections with NERSA within thirty days from the date of this publication. Such objections to be in the form of an affidavit and must be directed to NERSA through any of the addresses below. So that is what we have responded to is that we became aware of this through the this notice in the newspaper. We have no other information and no other forum currently to go to object and we didn't, we want NERSA to be aware of the fact that there is actually an active mine next door and that we are concerned about several things and that we have not had the relevant consultation or anything like that that we believe that we should have been as the adjacent landowner. As to the basis on NERSA, why NERSA would reject that this, that I can't answer at this stage. But that we have responded directly to what was in the paper and the little bit of information that we were given. So that is what we have done. And then Hannah, I think you and Rihanna might be able to answer the first half of Mr. Mekizé's other questions.
Yes, good afternoon, I think being an environmental assessment practitioner and not a specialist in terms of the South African grid code for electricity, it was merely a question of additional information that we request as we understand Madini is within its rights to demand proof that the solar project has completed and passed a grid impact study and voltage stability assessment. As far as I understand, the South African grid code for the electricity transmission and distribution as published by NERSA would require that all the generators connecting to the grid demonstrate technical compliance to avoid power quality degradation, frequency and voltage instability and harm to existing user supply reliability. Might be a simple question for them to answer and I'm sure they have considered this, but we haven't been privy to that information, so from the client's side, Madini can at this stage just ask for further clarification about that.
Okay, thank you very much for your responses. I don't want to pin you down to such an extent that you give knee-jerk responses to the questions. I would like to give you just some time also to submit any further augmentation of these responses by way of expanding on the issue of the legality. And what from our side now, looking at the fact that the issues that you are raising are actually dealt with via a different legislation and a different process. Noting that even in the past, NERSA has taken decisions even in situations where there was no environmental authorization granted. Which then, because we understand that the regulator may take a decision but still require that the licensee complies with all the other laws of the republic. Which in any event renders that license not being implementable in that case. So from my side I would say you've got your additional seven days within which to provide information. Let's leave it at that. I hope panel members you are covered, Advocate Chole I saw your hand up and it's now down, want to say anything?
No Chairperson, it's fine, I just wanted to check with the team that was presenting whether they've launched an appeal with the environmental authority and based on the authorization given to the applicant, but it's something that they can include in their written response if they want to.
Thank you, I think if you can just also include that aspect because one would think that that as I said is a different process, you would also be able to follow up on that process on its own. I don't know if Madam Sot here and the team you are agreeable to that augmentation within the next seven days?
I would need to just consult with my client obviously. At this stage, I don't have anything to the contrary, but if we are not agreeable then we will let you know afterwards. In addition to which, if I can just preliminarily respond to the very last query, we have, and Rihanna and Hannah can also back me or step in and augment what I'm going to say, is that we have not been able to, we have not been able to launch any process under the environmental, under NIMA in relation to the environmental authorization or to the DMPR under the section fifty-three approval. Because we have not received any of the documents, we have not been able to consider any of the information that Hifalt allegedly has and despite requests for same. So we have no way of knowing what that impact is. And so you know obviously once we have the relevant documents, we will go through the relevant channels and forums. But to date we have nothing else. Hannah, Rihanna, do you want to add anything to that?
Good from my side, thanks Cara.
Good from my side as well, thanks Cara.
Cara and the team, thank you very much, I'm also good on my side. Would like to say that we appreciate your responses and we're looking forward to receiving the augmentation of your responses and any matters related there too within the next seven days. Thank you very much.
Thanks Mr. Mekizé and members of NERSA.
Thanks ma'am, we then proceed then to Recreation Africa Group of Companies. I think I have Adele Forsyte and Bonemi Lewis. Adele if you may please switch on your camera? Looking for Adele? And Bonemi? Madwunda, may please assist.
Chair for some reason, for some reason we don't have them here anymore.
They are not here?
I can't seem to see them anymore Chair.
Please just try to dial them in, we don't want to leave anyone out of this, especially that they are the last presenters.
Let me see what I can do Chair.
Apologies to everyone on call, we just want to make sure that we get them on board and then we're able to conclude this public hearing. We really employ you for your indulgence.
MS team seem to have some limitations. I can only access the internal colleagues, the external ones are left to use their cell phone to do that. Please give me a chance to do that Chair.
Please.
Chair, thank you, I managed to get hold of Adele. She indicated that there was a miscommunication between herself and us on the registration side, she only intended to attend as an observer, which she did. And she logged out after she had satisfied herself with the information that she wanted to hear. Therefore, we are done with the presenters Chair, we may revert back to our applicant to respond to the objections.
Thank you, Mr. Madwunda, that then means that we just gonna give you, if William is still here, William McNan and Neil Vessels as the applicant respectively, an opportunity just to say a few words in response to what has been put forth as objections also. If any, I'll start off with McNan. I know there are no objections directed at you, but just in this instance, but just some commentary from your side?
Yes, thank you Chairperson, so there were indeed some written comments from the Recreation Africa Group. We have addressed them with a response. And we've also brought some further information today in the presentation that where we tried to cover further the concerns of the Recreation Africa Group. So we have no further comment and we remain available to, if there are any further comments from the Recreation Africa Group to address them.
Thank you, is the Vessels?
Thank you Chairperson, if I may, I would like to call upon Mr. Matt Ash to come and respond to some of the objections as he's already been sworn in.
Thank you, thank you Neil, thank you Chair. Yeah, I would like to respond in brief, I can place on record, we will be putting in additional, a supplementary affidavit on top of the answering affidavit that we have already submitted to deal with some of the assertions that were made as part of the objection. If I may just focus on two points. The first is in relation to the question of the mining area. We have dealt with this in some detail in the answering affidavit, but we're going to be amplifying it with more detail pertaining to what the objectors' actual rights are as opposed to its obligations. And that, for all intents and purposes, but specifically sector. Uh, for for all intents and purposes, but specifically section fifty-three, the project does not impinge. On the applicant's mining rights. What it does do, perhaps, is impose on the applicant, so the objector. Um, uh, the um, the obligations to take mitigation measures in relation to its blasting activities. And that's very clear from the blasting permit that the the objector itself attached to its um, to its objection. But we're going to um, amplify that in in some detail and deal with the 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 question of the mining right area. The other, the other aspect in principle that um. That we must emphasize and we will do so in the supplementary affidavit is this jurisdictional question which. The Honorable Committee Members quite rightly raised, which we alluded to in our presentation. Um, and that is, um. If the, uh, if the objector has a concern around the um. Sustainability and viability, particularly around um. Uh, uh, job creation, economic development obligations, et cetera. Its inquiry must lie with or raise the the issue with the Department of Elec- Electricity and Energy. Not, not in as part of this process, as was quite rightly pointed out. This process is a limited mandate process, that the the application is made on the face of it, that there are. Authorizations that have been granted. Those authorizations have been granted. If the um, uh, and and sorry, and there has been an appointment. Um, as preferred bidder under the REAP program. If the objector has an issue with that. And the sustainability of the project, it must raise that with the Department of Electricity and Energy in terms of the procurement. The same considerations apply to the environmental authorization. With respect, it's just not good enough to say, we've tried to inquire. That information is available from DFFE in with respect to the environmental authorization. We will deal with in the supplementary affidavit. The process that was followed. With respect, the environmental process was advertised. If if the um, objector failed to um, to pick up that advertisement regarding the environmental process. That is not the project's problem. But those issues regarding the environmental authorization are properly raised outside of this forum. This process does not have the jurisdiction to deal with that. On the face of it, those environment, the environmental authorization has been granted. And must therefore stand and stands until set aside. The same applies to the section fifty-three consent. It's not good enough to say, well, we don't have the information. There are processes under the MPRDA which entitles the objector to follow and find out. What the process was followed. Are its rights in fact impacted? We we assert not, but. Uh, we we cannot um, say that the objector is not entitled to go and establish the uh, the position. As its rights are under the MPRDA, but that's the forum in which it must follow to um, to. To determine whether or not the section fifty-three consent was validly um, granted or not. At this stage, this committee with respect and the regulator are faced with an application that is fully compliant. It has been accepted and on that basis, given the limited mandate that um, the regulator has. Under um, the uh, Electricity Regulation Act and the um. The National Energy Regulator Act, that with respect, in our view, there is nothing before this committee. That um, that prevents it or hinders it from granting. The application for a generation license. If I may just also mention this and we'll deal with it in the supplementary affidavit. Um, I think it was acknowledged by the objector that they are not um, the the. Um, uh, they are not a uh, an expert in grid code compliance. With respect. The project when first bid has to demonstrate its ability to comply with the grid code. And that's the whole point of obtaining a cost estimate letter from um, NT CSA. Uh, uh, for um, for the grid connection and following which following. Um, appointment as preferred bidder, the budget quote for um, the construction of the necessary infrastructure to ensure that compliance. Uh, with respect, that process has already been determined. If the objector has a concern in those respects, again, it must raise this. Um, in the procurement process. Finally, one aspect which um, I didn't deal with, or we didn't deal with in the presentation, is this question of. Overlap of um, the servitudes and access rights. Again, with respect. Um, uh, there seems to be a misapprehension of um, of of what those rights are. There is no overlap. Access is not along the boundary of the mining area. There are no shared servitudes. So, as I say, um, Chair, we will be submitting a supplementary affidavit to deal with these these aspects in some detail. And we will deliver that uh, before the seven-day deadline.
Thank you very much, um, uh, Matt Ash. We really appreciate the responses and. This brings us to the end of our public hearing. I would like to really thank all the presenters. Um, as well as uh, uh, all, everyone on call, not forgetting the members of the public that follow. Uh, these proceedings, uh, because they they help actually to 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 refine our processes. And and make us as a, as NERSA, a more effective regulator. Uh, noting that we don't possess the monopol of wisdom and it is through your participation. As well as uh, keeping a watchful eye over us, that helps us uh, to then appear to be. Uh, the the smart and good regulator at the end of the day, uh, serving this very pitiful. Public of South Africa. I would also like to thank my fellow panel members. Uh, for all the their contributions, not only in this uh, uh, session. But um, something that they keep doing over and over again. Uh, not forgetting the staff members, management of NERSA. For their, the good work that they do, uh, as as uh, the background work in in dealing with these uh, matters. And 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 assisting the energy regulator to take decisions. Uh, that are well-informed and and serving the the ob- the objects of the act. In the manner that we we would be proud of. Uh, this then brings uh, uh, this uh, uh, public hearing to the close. I would like to to request all the members of NERSA to then rejoin the pre-hearing uh, link. With that, from my side, I thank you for your cooperation once again. This public hearing stands adjourned. Have a pleasant weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Chairperson. Bye.